Good evening, we called order to the regular meeting. Yeah, I'll just switch it on. We called order to the regular meeting of West Valley City Council. We welcome you all here tonight. We note that we have all of our council members present for court. This evening, we've invited the American Preparatory Academy Strings Group. I don't know, I guess they're out of identified that. They've agreed to come tonight and perform our opening ceremony. And so, I don't know how you need to set up, but we invite you to come up here and... So four of you, welcome. You're going through over there.
There you go.
Thank you, girls. We'll have a little bit more information on that. There's a specific reason they're here tonight. And just a little bit later on our agenda, we'll talk a little bit more about that. We'll take care of quickly a couple of business items here. Okay. Approval of our minutes of July 23rd, a motion on the minutes.
Move to approve the minutes of July 23rd?
Second. Seeing no discussion, all in favor of approving the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Seeing no passage unanimously, the minutes are approved. We will do... Under our proclamations and so forth, we're going to change the order there just slightly. We're going to take 6C first. And that's Councilmember Dawn Christiansen, a proclamation on lights on after school day.
Thank you, Mayor. Proclamation declaring August 23rd, 2019, as lights on after school day in West Valley City, in support of American Preparatory Academy's after-school programs and other after-school programs in the city. Whereas high-quality after-school programs not only keep young people healthy and safe, but help foster meaningful relationships, inspire learning and career pathways, promote civic engagement and community service, provide worthwhile and challenging activities, develop talents and strengths, and increase overall success in school and life. And whereas research indicates high-quality after-school programs that provide expanded learning opportunities for young people outside the school day helps to improve academic achievement, increase attendance and social behavior, and support working families. Whereas in Utah, seventeen percent, that's ninety-nine thousand one hundred forty-eight of the K-12 youth are responsible for taking care of themselves after school. And whereas of all Utah children not currently enrolled in after-school, forty-seven percent, two-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand four-hundred-eighty-two would be likely to participate if an after-school program were available in their community. Whereas ninety-two percent of parents are satisfied with the after-school program their child attends. And whereas seventy-three percent of after-school programs are located in a public school building. And whereas ten percent, fifty-seven thousand six-hundred-eighty-six of Utah's K-12 children participate in after-school programs, including seven-thousand-one-hundred-ninety-two kids in programs supported by the U.S. Department of Education's Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers Initiative, the only federal program dedicated to after-school. And whereas American Preparatory Academy has an average of four-hundred-and-thirty students attending after-school programs each day, between two sites and over thirty different after-school programs, including ten study hall sessions each day, and the following clubs: art, math tutoring, math Olympiad, debate, psychology, garden, National Honor Society, sped, guitar, dance, Dungeons and Dragons, FCC LA, biology, Love Loud, Decuriam, which is a Latin class, Secondary Sustena Strings, which we just heard, gaming, coding, PE, stage production, yearbook, and robotics. Education has changed over the years, you can see. Also included are Sustena Utah music programs, which include strings, band, piano, guitar, bucket band, as well as voice training, music theory, foreign languages, history of rock, music theater, nutrition, hand-bell choir, world music, Spam Again, Dow Prose, and art. Also included in after-school programs are two performing groups featuring advanced students, Sustena Strings and Secondary Sustena Strings with violin, like viola and cello students, who toured the community giving free-service concerts. This past year, their students completed over fourteen thousand homework assignments. And whereas Lights On After School is a celebration of after-school programs promoting the critical importance of quality programs for youth by ensuring lights stay on and doors remain open for all youth during the out-of-school time hours. Now therefore, we, the Mayor and City Council of West Valley City, do hereby declare August 23rd, 2019, as Lights On After School Day in West Valley City in honor of American Preparatory Academy's after-school program and the other after-school programs sponsored by the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers.
Again, we appreciate the quartet that came and played from American Preparatory Academy, a sample of the quality of what is going on there at that school, and replicated across many different organizations. And having read this proclamation that Councilman Christiansen read, we're glad to support them and the great work that they do in our community. And we appreciate them coming tonight so that people can see the great work that is going on there. Any other comments with that? Then I think we'll thank you all for coming. You're welcome to stay, but there's no more music. So we're going to talk money and politics and all that stuff. So thank you very much for coming. With that, we'll now go to our presentation of for the Best of State Golf Programming for the Parks and Recreation Department. And Mark Layton is here.
I'm here representing the Best of State Awards Program in Utah. And this is fun for me because it has absolutely nothing to do with politics. There are independent judges who score the nominations that are submitted for Best of State. If all of you were judges, you wouldn't confer with each other, you wouldn't share what you had decided or scores or anything. You would individually submit your scores to the accounting firm that tallies up all the scores. Which, that's why it's really fun to present this. And so the Ridge Golf Club, and if Bryant, Bryant Bouchard and Nancy Day are here, Bryant is the golf pro and Nancy Day is the parks director. Oh, come on up. And so after the judges had reviewed nominations that have been submitted in this category, the scores, it turned out that West Valley City's Ridge Golf Club won Best of State 2019. And so, representing Best of State, I would like to officially present their Best of State Medal and certificate to them and congratulate them and all of you that have done such a good job.
Oh, thank you.
Next, we have our Employee of the Month Award, Councilman Buehlert. He said golf wasn't politics, but it's certainly a passion and in some people's minds awfully close to a religion that they practice every Sunday. Some people get very involved in golf. And it's been a real plus for our city to have great people associated with our golf program, and there are just all kinds of great things they're doing.
Mayor, thank you for your support. Thank you Nancy for her support on all this. We appreciate it.
Next, we have our Employee of the Month Award, Councilman Buehlert.
Thank you. The Employee of the Month for August is Melissa Katton from Parks and Rec. Could you stand up, please, while I read this nomination so you can be appropriately recognized and embarrassed? Melissa Katton, Nancy Day's Parks and Recreation Administrative Assistant, worked tirelessly to bring the 9/11 Never Forget Mobile Exhibit to West Valley City. Typically, this event must be scheduled a year or more in advance to allow time to plan and coordinate. But due to a late cancellation, the exhibit became available to West Valley City. The normally extensive arrangements remained in one month, and this was due largely to the hard work of Melissa, who worked diligently with Nancy Day, Wayne Powell, the city manager, the mayor, the city council, the Silver Tunnel to Towers Foundation, the fire department, the police department, public relations, many schools, countless volunteers, and many other groups and individuals. Through much effort, this exhibit was brought to Utah for the first time ever over the patriotic Memorial Day weekend. Arrangements like the procession, opening ceremony, honorary wreaths, hours of operations, security, and other logistics had to be detailed and considered carefully. Melissa continually worked with numerous schools along the procession route to invite participation of students and continued her efforts up to and during the morning of the procession. Her efforts have not gone unnoticed. Praise for the event and all the hard work that went into it has come from community members, local fire department, city employees, and schools who witnessed and participated in the procession or attended the opening program and toured the exhibit. This was truly an amazing exhibit to have in West Valley City for the community to tour and to remember the first responders from September 11th, 2001, and beyond, who continue to keep America safe every day and pay tribute to those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice in doing so. This event wouldn't have been so successful without Melissa's hard work and efforts. So thank you, and please come up and shake our hand.
And if you would like to make a speech, Melissa, or at least introduce us to who's here to support you today, so we can recognize them, and then again, you may stay or you may leave as you wish. Who's here with you?
So, this is the rest of the parks leadership. This is Jason Erickson and Jamie Young are parks assistant directors, Kent Jensen, Sydney and Austin. Our younglies and all of the golf guys.
Thank you.
You know, Mayor, I had the opportunity of working with Melissa on another project that was a day of service, and she took that over and worked it and made it very successful. So this is not a one-time event for her, she does it all the time.
Okay. Next, we arrive at our public comment period. First of all, if you're here to speak about the budget, there will be a separate public hearing for the budget, but it is only for the budget. If you're here for other items, then the public comment period, three people have signed up. Since I see a couple of new names, I just remind you, it's your five minutes, it's not a question and answer, it's not a discussion, it's not a debate, it's your time. We will listen while you share your comments. Maximum five minutes, address it to not anyone other than the mayor. The purpose of that is to maintain decorum in our meeting and to ensure that we do not get into personalities. So with that, then we're set. So Jim Visok signed up first.
I'd like to be first, but I thought there'd be more people, especially with this parking thing. Once again, I'm here about code enforcement, the ALJ, Mr. Morris, again. I've sent you guys several emails, 57711, 716, 724, Times Two, 730, and today. I have brought these issues up in this council chamber many times. I've talked to many of you one-on-one. I come to the study meetings and listen. But I feel, as most of the citizens do, that we are not being heard. Nicole, one of the assistant city managers assures me we are being heard, but actions speak louder than words. The actions of Mr. Morris as ALJ towards me are wrong, unconstitutional, and a violation of my civil liberties. Mr. Morris uses bullying and intimidation to get his point across. This may not work for him in the military, but has no place in city government. I have watched Mr. Morris lecture eighty- and ninety-year-old women in his role as ALJ, along with using bullying, scare tactics, and intimidation towards other citizens. I have watched Mr. Morris lie and give false information to you guys in study meetings. Why did you guys allow this to happen? It is not a surprise to me that code enforcement, that some of the code enforcement employees are using the same tactics, scare, bully, and intimidation. If you talk to the citizens out there, when you say code enforcement, they immediately step back, whoa. Code enforcement needs to be more of a positive thing. Why don't you guys do something about it? Mr. Moss, when I was doing, Mr. Moss was the former director of the animal shelter, when I was getting involved and giving you guys the regular numbers warned me if I made Mr. Morris mad that he would come after me. Mr. Morris' actions towards other citizens, West Valley's pet owners during that time, shows his actions to be true. What is so scary about this campaign? Why is Mr. Morris so afraid of it? I'll answer that. He's afraid that the citizens are going to come out and let you know what's happening in the code enforcement hearings and what his code enforcement employees are doing, saying, and the contact he's having, what they're having with the public. Mr. Morris needs to do the job that the citizens of West Valley are paying him. As the ALJ, he is unable to do that job right now. He's supposed to be the buffer before it goes to a hearing. He cannot do that. The citizens of West Valley are paying him over a hundred-and-seventy-two thousand dollars a year salary and bonuses, according to the 2018 numbers that are out there. Mr. Morris needs to be removed as ALJ as soon as possible, and somebody else, an independent, non-code enforcement person, be put in there. You guys just did a one-year memorial for Jill. And if real changes to code enforcement don't happen, unfortunately, she may not be the last one hurt, or worse, killed. And I'm not advocating that in any way, but if the bullying, intimidation, scare tactics don't stop, it's going to have to end as crazy people out there. The citizens of West Valley need to be listened to, and code enforcement needs to be fixed. Thank you.
Next is Michael Finch.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate this time. My name is Michael Finch. I'm a resident of West Valley City, and I'm here today as a business owner, representing my small business. I'm here to talk to you about parking ordinance. It's 22-2118. It's titled Parking in City-Owned Parking Lots. And that's what it's currently, the ordinance is called. And my understanding is it's going to be changed to Parking in Parking Lots, which would then include private parking lots, along with the current city parking lots that are enforced. And I'll read this. "In any parking lot where parking stalls are designated by painted lines or otherwise, no motorized or non-motorized vehicles shall be parked outside of a designated parking stall unless specifically authorized by the city." And my concern is where it says, "outside of designated parking stalls." I'm all for enforcement of handicap parking, red zones, possibly yellow zones, someone's parked, blocking exits or entrances that could be hazardous to the public. Frankly, I thought there was enforcement out there going into our parking lots to do those things. I didn't realize they weren't allowed to come into private parking lots. But I'm concerned about the designated parking stalls, and here's why. From inside my store, I can visibly see about seven parking stalls out front, and on a daily basis, there's several hundred cars that come in and out. And there's multiple cars, I'd say twenty, thirty percent, that don't park exactly in their stall. And so my concern is, the way that it's currently written, an enforcement officer could come in and somebody's parked on the line, or as I saw several times a day, they come in kind of at an angle. The front wheels are in the stall all the way, the back wheels come into a second stall. Is that an infringement that's going to be ticketed? I don't want my customers, that would probably associate a ticket with my business, being upset with me. My life could depend on it. And the penalties, according to 22-203, are quite severe, actually. It's a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars for any infraction, except for handicap zone. Handicap zone is two-hundred-and-ten dollars. But if someone parks on the line again, are they going to get an infraction for a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars? To me, that seems very severe. What I'd like to see, what I'm asking the council today is, I'm not sure how this process works, I don't know if you have to vote on this, I would love to see you kind of table this right now, and maybe look at it and have some more defined language as far as stalls and what that parking is, what does that mean? And if you can't do that right now, I would encourage you to vote no at this point, until at a later date that you can maybe consider some different language. I'll use some examples. Embassy Suites, which is just right here by us, if they had a customer staying overnight and they decide to take up two stalls because they want to protect their car, I don't think they're going to want somebody ticketed for a hundred-and-twenty-five dollars in their parking lot. Another option might be, could it be a voluntary thing where businesses could call and say, I'm having an issue with this, either a particular car or customers, whatever, could you please have someone come in? Versus being that they can just come in at any time they wanted to. So anyway, again, I appreciate your time. I wish you would really consider this, that at least revisit the wording that it currently is. Instead of just taking out city-owned, we might want to look at rewording the parking stalls as it currently is written. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Leona.
Etchmire.
Etchmire. Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think I have a problem with code enforcement. I need your help. I've had five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars because I have children's toys in my backyard. And that's basically what I've amounted to. I think I've been stopped, harassed, and bullied. I live between American Drive and Mission Street. I'm ninety years old. My sister is eighty-five. My grandniece, who lives in my place in America, and on American Drive, is twenty-four with problems with anxiety and depression. I can't handle it all. I ended up in first part of June at Granger Medical with a heart rate of a hundred-and-seventeen, and my blood pressure was right behind it. They gave me some medication and sent me to St. Lawrence Hospital. Well, it took me two weeks to see a cardiologist and another two and a half months to see another cardiologist in IHC. I'm ready to die, but I should sell the audistrol. And so, I need your help. I can't pay the five-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. Look at my front yard in American Drive, and I think it's been tipped up. The backyard was, my grandniece had a friend that was having troubles, stayed with her for a couple of months, and when she left, she left her children's, or most of her children's toys there. Well, when I was able to, we took care of it. We put those toys out in the yard, out in the front, and who wanted them, we'd come and pick them up. And when they had the garbage pickup, they took the rest. My yard, my front yard's been good. My backyard is pretty good, most of the time. I wasn't even able to do a, have a garden this year. But damn it, I need help. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for our public comment period?
Yes.
If you'll come forward and state your name and your address for the record.
Okay, my name is Phil Angus. I live at 3149 South, 4180 West. I had no intention to come speak tonight, I just came to listen. I just came to listen. But I have to agree with Jim and this lady. We have a problem with code enforcement. It's a bad problem. I'm not trying to stir up problems, but every time I mention code enforcement, people say, oh yeah, they've done this, they've done that. We hate them. And they do. The, what Jim mentioned about the, what, what the, the administrative judge, that smells bad to me. I think we need better representation. I would like to see code enforcement. I realize that they have a problem being nice, but there's too many variables in the city for, for somebody to be a hardliner. We need some, we need somebody between code enforcement and the people. We need somebody we can go to that will stand up for us. And I'd just like to see that because code enforcement is causing problems. They're not solving problems the way I see it and the way that the people see it. They're creating the problems. And that's, that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no further comments, we'll close the public comment period. Come back here, let's see. Next, don't there, is any city manager comment?
Yes, Mayor. Thanks. I'm going to take a moment for a comment. And I'll be brief. I'm going to address the code enforcement discussion again for a review time. And I don't usually make any comment to any of the speakers that come to the podium on this, although I have in the past and I've done things like explain exactly what the system is and how that functions and all that. My comment tonight is really just going to be more myself, putting myself on the record in response to Mr. V-Soc's challenging of Mr. Morris's moracity, his integrity, the job he's doing, all those sorts of things. Mr. V-Soc has come in here a number of times for a number of weeks and for a number of months at this point and impugned the character by name of a number of employees throughout the city, which frankly, all I'm doing is going on the record and saying, I refute that. It's incorrect. Mr. Morris has the department head and the employees he has worked with and the other employees that Mr. V-Soc from time to time has conversation with or other discussion with, have my full support. I completely support what they are doing, the process by which they are doing that. There's nothing out of line in those processes. And really frank the mayor, the only reason I even wanted to make that comment is, it needs to be said from time to time in a public forum where those sorts of, those sorts of comments are made so that there is a record that reviews them. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. Council comments?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. I have been listening to Mr. V-Soc about a month or over the months now. I personally, I want to be fair for Lan Morris about this so he can talk to us in a study meeting or something about this. I think it's, we can understand for, I'm here to be fair, to be honest with you. It's got to be fair game. I don't heard one party talking about Lan Morris, but I want, wanted Lan Morris to defend himself, to say something about this and try maybe we can clear it up so we don't have to hear this every Tuesday. So I encourage maybe just in a study meeting and let Lan Morris do, to talk about this. And I appreciate it very much.
I'd like to make a few comments, John. I've been thinking about this for a while. And I hope that my comments can be educational to some as well as expressing a viewpoint. And I want to take it up a few levels, a little higher level of viewpoint on things. It would be nice, I think, if we didn't have to have any laws or ordinances at all. And then we wouldn't have any enforcement and we would just all live in peace and harmony. But history has proven that for large numbers of people who live together in peace and harmony, there have to be rules and there has to be enforcement of the rules or else we end up in violence and anarchy and whoever has the biggest stick wins. And I don't want to live in that kind of a society. When people come here, and there have been a lot of people that have come here over the last months with complaints about their case not being handled fairly, and that concerns me. But whether it's ordinance enforcement citation or a parking ticket or a traffic ticket, I'd like to express and hopefully be understood that this is not the forum to review individual cases. And I don't think that if we really give it some thought, we want to live in a society where if you are friends with somebody on the city council or make friends with somebody on the city council or complain to somebody on the city council that your case will be treated differently and will be dismissed or penalties waived or so forth, that to me is the definition of corruption. There are appeals processes to have your ordinance case, your traffic ticket or whatever citation reviewed so that you can have a review and make sure that you're treated fairly and according to the law. And that is an appropriate place to bring your individual grievance about whether or not you should be penalized for an infraction, an alleged infraction. This is not the place for that. And I wanted to say that because I'm frustrated that it seems to be that people think this is the place for that. And they come here and they tell us their story and then they leave and they don't get any satisfaction at all because we're not acting on their individual case because that's not our place, that's not our role, and we don't have the authority and we're not corrupt. That said, I do want to point out one thing with the proposed parking ordinance. Yeah, the fine is $125 plus a $3 administrative fee. $100 is waived if you pay it. We just, we just really want compliance. We're not trying to make money, but there has to be somewhat of a stick to get people to comply. I don't think that we could go around and use the carrot approach instead and give everybody 10 bucks if they parked appropriately today. We just have a, we have to work from the other side of that where there's much less enforcement needed looking for those few that are in violation of ordinance or state codes. So that's my two cents for today.
Thank you. I'm trying to get my arms around that. One of the things that I have always tried to do, and I personally have encouraged many people to come here to council meeting, I have encouraged people to run for office. And I think that citizens have a right to use any form that is appropriate. I don't think anyone tonight was, well, I take that back. Citizens need an opportunity if they feel that government has not assisted them appropriately, can they go to their elected officials? And the answer is yes. I served in the legislature for many years and oftentimes that was the only avenue to deal with some issues because it highlighted issues that sometimes needed changing. Now, did that happen in every case? Absolutely not. In this case, does it mean that we need to change our policy if someone comes to complain about an enforcement fraction that they've been issued a ticket, that we need to change our policy? And the answer is no, not necessarily. The general policies typically are okay. The question becomes, should citizens have an opportunity to voice that concern for whatever they feel? And I believe the answer to that, for me at least, is yes. If a member of the public feels that they are not being treated fairly, what happens when someone brings to me an issue like these about a concern? Well, the thing that I try to do is I go and get more information. Off, well, these can fall into many different categories. Some of them are a misunderstanding of even what the rules are. Another is that oftentimes there's a lot more to the story than a maximum five-minute discussion can have. And so when I go and get that information, I can make a better informed issue. And the staff has been great at providing me information, sometimes almost too much. They will give background and information to give perspective and understanding. Staff has been great to work with along those lines. Are staff perfect? No, probably not, neither we as elected officials nor any of us. We do our best in the circumstances we find ourselves. But I don't want to discourage people in any way from contacting their elected officials with concerns or from coming here, even though at times it sounds pretty negative. What other options do some people have apart from coming here? If they speak, sometimes people say if we don't immediately respond and fix the problem to their liking, we are not listening. The great challenge we have as elected officials is to determine if a complaint issued by one person represents a majority of the people of the city. And if that complaint does reflect that, is it the right change to make for future policy? Those are very, very difficult questions, questions that we as a council have talked about many, many times. The issue of ordinance enforcement, I've been on the city council now for five and a half years. And I can't tell you how many times as a council we have talked over those ordinances, brought up issues to say, is this fair? Is it working? Is it the right thing to do? And pretty well, we get a significant majority of people who support most of our ordinances. There are reasons for that. We live in a community together. There are things we have to do because what one person does can affect their neighbor in profound ways. So though I don't necessarily enjoy hearing many negative comments, I still believe that it is okay as long as it is done respectfully. And that is an important part. I think that we are allowing a lack of respect to come into play. To have a difference of opinion is right. It is a, a right that we have as American citizens to view things differently. But it must be done respectfully. And I know I'm talking a little bit long here, but I listened to a talk this morning about ethics in public comments and how we are failing in the public forum to be respectful in our comments at the national level, certainly at the state level and even at the local I was, and I'm going to give an example, not from our city. In a city council meeting, an individual came and in addressing a specific council member said, you're just evil. You're just evil. And I say, we have failed. I have had many, many opportunities. I've had people upset with things that we've done. But when we sit down and talk them over together, oftentimes we can come to a better understanding. So I, I, I say there needs to be some improvement, but I, I must guard the right of people to come to talk to their elected officials, whether individually or whether as a group. That does not mean that what individuals say is correct or the needed action. But what it does mean is that perhaps we need to look and see if there are any concerns. And if as a group, and a very diverse group of varying opinions, as you can see even tonight, we still work together and we still respect one another's opinions. And that is also the right of an elected official to have an opinion and to express it. Our goal, certainly for you and the public when you come, we ask you, we hope you'll be respectful. That's part of the reasons why most comments are directed to the mayor, because we don't want it to become something personal, attacking personality or individuals. We would encourage you to look at your comments as well to see if you can improve that and we will do the same. I personally commit to try and look and see if I can be more respectful to those who bring concerns to the council and to respectfully listen to their comments and where appropriate and where justified to go and act on those. The majority of these cases can be resolved by simple understanding and do not need a change in policy and are oftentimes very appropriate for the situation. So with that long-winded comment, I respect every member of the council and their right to express their opinion, as I sometimes do. But I do hope that there is an opportunity for citizens and elected officials to interact in respectful ways to see if solutions can be found. Understand that given the size of our city, not always can they be solved to your liking individually. We must look at the greater good of the city. And I think that the same thing, as you heard Mr. Pile, when he made his comments, he was being respectful to those who work here. They're not perfect, but they're trying their very best to fulfill the assignments that they've been given. So Mr. Pile, I think, set a good example for that as he started here. Hopefully, all of us will do the same. Well, let's see. Certainly, I might have encouraged some to have some more comments. Certainly, anyone is welcome to add any comments that they would like.
Mayor, I just want to make sure that I wasn't misunderstood. I, I don't oppose public comment. I'm just afraid that people are coming here expecting a resolution that we cannot provide them.
Yeah. A great individual who served in public service for many years, oh boy, five decades ago, said that the role of an elected official is to distinguish between the loud voices of a, like vocal minority and the overall will of the people who are silent. And I think that your, your comments reflect that directly, that just because someone complains and we don't act, we are often listening to that silent majority. And I know everyone here on this council absolutely, totally supports that. So thank you, Councilman Uwe, for that clarification. Any others? I would note that having been around a lot of places and traveled across the US and interacted with thousands upon thousands of elected officials, that our city is well represented in a very diverse way and brings many issues to the table, but they're just good people. Every one of them are great neighbors. And, and we are very fortunate as a city. We really are. Not all cities, even in Utah, can say that. West Valley City is, is very special. Well, thank you all. I guess I got wordy because it's election day. I guess I got wordy because it's Election Day. My thoughts get carried away on the Election Day. With that, we will move on. We actually do have a couple of agenda items, and some of you want to be home at eight o'clock to get the first results. And so do I, even though I'm not one of them. So, we're going to go to a public comment period for our budget for the fiscal year This will also consider Resolution 19-95 to adopt a final budget. I would say this, that this process is a great process. The council assigns Mr. Pyle and his staff to prepare a budget for the city. We as elected officials don't have the time and the detail to go into that budget. This budget, what does it run now, when you're throwing everything, about 120?
Hundred, yeah, that's about right, Mayor.
About approximately 120 million. And you can imagine there's a lot of detail in that. Our city has won awards for their work on finances and on budget and sharing that information with the public. And Mr. Pyle certainly has a great background for that. He's been our city manager now for how many years?
Sixteen, seventeen, I think, in November.
Seventeen in November. Very experienced. So, Mr. Pyle, I will turn to you to review the budget because you're very familiar with it. I believe you're going to have our chief financial officer, Jim Walsh, assist you.
Yes, sir, thank you. So, Jim, our finance director, has a very limited PowerPoint presentation. It's only five slides in which he'll go over the most salient points of what's going on with the budget year. But for just a quick summary, we're talking about $85 million-ish in the general fund budget, together with the other funds of the mayor, as you mentioned. I'm going to just take a real quick, brief second to talk about the process itself, which, for the audience and for anybody who might be watching at home, is almost a year-long process. In fact, if you include all of the review, it's actually an overlapping, more than a year process. But generally, to start this in about December with some revenue projections, and then we ended in August with the actual final adoption of the budget. There were lots of meetings and discussions, as the mayor mentioned, and I think that's enough for introduction. So, with that, I'm going to turn the time over to Mr. Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Pyle. Mayor and council, as Mr. Pyle mentioned, this is a process that goes on constantly where budgets are an important part of running the city. They're a part of presenting a reasonable and responsible way of handling the public trust. We take that very seriously. We're looking at it very hard to make sure that the dollars are spent appropriately and according to the direction and the recommendation of the city manager and the council, who ratifies the budget. Incidentally, there's not a dollar that gets spent in the city that isn't authorized by the city, I'm sorry, authorized by the city council. That's by state law. State code stipulates that we must have a balanced budget. Unlike our federal budget, we have to present this each year. There is a provision where we can actually extend that to two years, but we'd like to do this on an annual basis, as do most municipalities within the state, so that we can review this constantly and make sure that there are no errors. We also prepare this budget to national standards, which help us to be able to get the best rates for bonding. We also provide transparency, standards which we meet, which the state stipulates, which also the national organizations, such as the Government Finance Officers Association, provide for us, and we are in compliance with all of those regulations and all of those standards. So, you can be assured that the numbers that you receive, the information that's provided to the public and to the regulatory agencies, is accurate. It's in a standard format that can be interpreted by someone that is looking for certain information to make an evaluation of the city's operations. So, with that, we, we can move to the next slide there, Jake. There are several things that control our budgetary process. Of course, one of them is the economic conditions. We monitor those constantly, and we make projections to reflect what's happening to the economy generally, also the economy locally. There are things that impact us as a city that don't impact other cities, and we take those into account. Part of this process is working with the department heads, working with outside agencies in order to get their take on what's happening with the economy, so that we have some kind of an idea of what our revenues are going to be and how we can plan for any contingencies that might pop up. As you know, we've been in an economic expansion for a number of years. During this time, we've been able to accumulate some reserves, which the city council is very aware of, and also to take care of some needed infrastructure problems that have come up. Over time, just like your own household and a citizen's household, your home begins to break down and things need to be replaced, and we've seen that happen. This last year, we've had great success in replacing some of our major infrastructure with regards to fire stations and roads and other things that we've taken on, and that's been at the direction of the city council. So, that's one of the reasons we do a budget, is to make sure that we use those funds responsibly. And also, we do that to make sure that we meet the governmental mandates, to make sure that each dollar is accounted for and tracked. This year, the budget that we have before you is, the general fund budget is $85,962. We actually budget those to the dollar because that's the format that the state asks us to present the dollars to, realizing that a budget is an estimate of revenues and expenditures. We never hit it right on the dollar. This is an attempt to do our very best at deciding where we're going to be and what kind of revenues we expect to bring in. Of this budget, we have a fairly budget, fairly balanced revenue sources. About 38% of our budget will come in from property taxes, 34% from sales tax, and the remainder, 28%, will come in from user fees and some other use taxes. That money gets used by, 48% of the money goes to public safety. The remainder goes to administration, parks and rec, public works, legal, debt service, and other sources. As was mentioned earlier, the budget, total budget is a little over $120 million. The city council has already approved the budgets for the redevelopment agency, the housing authority, and the building authority. And this budget is, and that was done back in May, when the city has the opportunity to, well, when they take the opportunity to reevaluate their property tax rates, we're able to adopt the budget in August, and that's why we're doing that today. If we look at the next slide, this gives you an idea of where the, what a typical property tax bill might be. This is an estimate. It's not intended that someone could put their house in there, and this is exactly what they're going to pay. This is on our website, so if anybody's interested, they can plug in the estimated house of their home. This year, the county's determined that the average home in West Valley City has a value of about $261,000. That's up quite a bit from last year, represents a healthy housing market. Of your total tax bill, about 27% of your bill goes to West Valley City to provide those services that I've mentioned before. So, that's kind of a breakdown. The majority of, the largest portion of your property tax goes to Granite School District, and then it breaks down amongst the other service districts, as you can find on the website. So, I'd encourage you to go ahead and put that, if you're interested in that for the public, they can go in and put their figure in there and get an estimate of where their taxes are going to be. These rates are updated as of today. However, after the truth in taxation hearings, which were holding today, some of the rates may change, although ours is anticipated to be, to remain the same. This notice was published in your newspaper. This is the proposed increase that West Valley City is proposing tonight. Now, this is to take advantage of what's called the judgment levy. It's not a proposed increase to increase operational revenue. This last year, as happens every year, taxpayers have the opportunity to appeal the assessed valuation of their properties. And typically, when a large taxpayer, a large business appeals their rate and the county determines that they have been over-assessed for a number of years, they'll authorize a rebate. That rebate is called a judgment. This year, the judgment was $145,000. And of that $145,000, that will be required to be taken from the city revenues this year, creating a deficit in our property tax revenue. State law allows us to impose the property tax judgment, which means a rebalancing of that property tax collection amongst the rest of the taxpayers to make sure that there's not a shortfall in revenue. So, I guess the easiest way to explain that is that for a number of years, businesses that have been over-assessed property tax and have paid a little bit more than they probably should have, and that's been determined by the county, that means that everybody else has paid a little bit less. So, this year, it's a one-time opportunity for the city to go back and rebalance those rates. This year, on an average residence, it's $2.58, which is approximately $21, I'm sorry, $21 cents per month, and that will allow us to fill that hole. It also allows us to give, to take several additional months to consider the budget in case there are any changes and things that might occur. So, with that, that's what I would present to you today, and I'd be happy to take any questions or whatever you desire.
Thank you. Just as a note, apart from the information you've provided, certainly on the city's website, there is a lot of financial information. Prior year financial reports that show actual expenditures, that show history, there's a lot of information available to those who are interested. So, everything is, you know, done for the public to view if they want to, and some do, some do. Just with that. Any particular questions?
Oh, I just have a comment. Look at the page number, the total avenues, revenues, and also totals expenditures right here, a very exact number. I think it's very good in math. So, that's only my comment.
But apparently, it's a state requirement that we go out to the nearest dollar?
Yes, they give us a format for submitting the budgets, and it does go out to the dollar.
And I'm sure the state looks at every last dollar, if we do get it on it. And those slides that you shared tonight, will those be put out on the, attached to the agenda?
Yes.
Okay. So, anyone wants those, that they'll be able to look at them as well. There are some good summaries there, and that's for most people who don't want to go down into the great detail. It'll give you a fair idea of what's happening. So, any other comments? Okay. With that introduction then, thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
We will open the public comment period. Is there anyone here to speak to the budget?
Yes, there is a lot of information out there, and it takes a lot of time. One thing I've noticed, though, and maybe you're allowed a certain percentage of differences, there's a lot of differences between, and I'm not talking bunches of dollars, I'm talking, you know, under a few thousand dollars, but the numbers just don't add up of what Lieutenant Governor's office says. For, I did code enforcement, of course. The numbers, you know, of their budgets last year, and so on and so on, with that. Like I said, I have all the numbers there. My question is that the, and it might not be part of, I guess it is part of the budget, is in the year-end revenue statement, why was code enforcement included with the police department? The reason I figured that out is there's two little numbers there. Why don't they have their own line under the revenue sources? Every other department in that thing had a revenue source listed, you know, for all the other sense. I don't understand that. And then, going to code enforcement, why is their budget being cut 10%? You know, I may disagree with some of the things that are going on, but their budget's being cut 10% this year. I think we need more code enforcement officers out there. They just need to be better trained with a lot of PR and human resource stuff. But, you know, I would ask, why are we reducing their budget from 765.99 to 635.919? It's $70,676 with page seven of the 21-page budget. That's the only thing I have on it, so.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else here to make comment on our budget? Seeing no further comments, I will close the public comment portion, our public hearing, and come back to the council where we will consider Resolution 19-95 to adopt or not a final budget. Mayor, move for approval of Resolution 19-95. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing no further comments, then we'll turn to our city recorder for the little call.
Councilman Vithi Sananu?
Aye.
Councilman Ling?
Yes.
Councilman Bular?
Aye.
Councilman Helen?
Uh.
Councilman Christian?
Yes.
Councilman Orville?
Yes.
And Mayor DeGlo.
Aye.
Motion has been announced.
Next, we go to ordinance 19-20. This is to amend our municipal code regarding parking of vehicles on city streets. And there's quite a bit of detail in that, prohibiting parking in a bike lane, a pedestrian trail, use of an immobilization device on nuisance vehicles, vehicles or sometimes called a boot, and then creating electronic payment and field section. This would also cover those comments that are brought in about parking in privately-owned parking lots. And there are a number of changes there, and I won't enumerate all those. Those have been out there for people to look at for a while, but there are quite a few issues there. And so, I'll have some more comments, but is there anything else we need to include in the introduction there? Okay. With that then, to the council for any comments. I will have some in a few minutes. You guys are getting used to me just carrying all the notes. Yes, thank you.
My question is, it's a wonder, this time is the first time we are going to allow our police department to go and to business people to give a ticket to them? Is it the first time we do that, or we have done it before? Does anyone can?
I think they're allowed right now to go in and enforce state law, which is handicap parking, red zone, that type of thing. But they cannot enforce any other laws, just the state statutes.
Can you elaborate a little bit? Is that, can they give a ticket to them, put the state law right now?
So, I think my issue with it is changing it from, well, putting the, excuse me, putting the definition of a parking lot in there to include public parking lots that are personal property of businesses. I think we need to take the parking definition out and go back to owned by the city. Our parking coordinators, I'm not sure that they enforce the handicap parking, the red zone, things like that, but I know the police officers can at this time because of the state law. So, I think we need to take out anything that deals with personal property, personal parking lots, just because the business themselves can police their parking lots, they have different uses, they have different delivery schedules that a semi might block some parking stalls for a while, but that's what the owner wants. And then, that semi's gone before he's his customers get there. There's a lot of different uses for their parking lot. Not everybody parks between the lines, and some park to the side of the lines, which is what happens if somebody wants to park their car in the shade. If the business owner doesn't have a problem with that, I don't see having somebody come in and give them a ticket for that as being necessary, especially for the fact I agree with the comment earlier that the person receiving the ticket is going to blame the business, not the city, and I think it could cost businesses business. So I could go along with the rest of the stuff in these changes, the 24-hour parking of your trailer for loading and unloading, the on-city-owned property. I can go along with enforcing some of the parking standards that are in here, unregistered cars, not parking properly, things like that. I know there have been businesses that have wanted assistance with nuisance vehicles on their property, and I would be more comfortable with them opting into a program that would give our parking coordinators permission to go into their parking lots, and they pay a nominal fee for that, and how about that way, then people opt out. I'd rather have them opt in and pay for the service of us enforcing parking in, on their private lots.
Now, that's interesting, so maybe a clarification, Mr. Pyle, maybe you or the staff, if currently, under existing law today, a private property owner, can they, if there's a nuisance vehicle, can they have that towed?
Yes.
Yes, absolutely.
Now, they do have to, I think, under current law, have to have information about whether the car is towed too, but now, and one was, the company said that there were diesel trucks with their trailers parking in their lot, taking up, you know, a row of, you know, 10 spaces or something. Even in that case, couldn't they take action against those people?
Yes, they still can. There are other practical issues that are associated with value of the vehicle, size of the vehicle, what towing companies can handle them. It's a lot easier for a car, for example, a sedan or pickup. Once you start getting passed out, it starts complicating the issue, but yes, from a technical standpoint, the answer is yes.
Now, when it comes to safety, for example, parking in a driveway or an exit, those could be towed right now. Those are, that's actually illegal, isn't it, to block that by the property?
Well, that depends, and I'd have to have somebody from PD or legal again, who was drafted in the list, that's, my belief is, if they were blocking an actual street exit in the way that you're talking, then yes, but there are also many instances, think about the mall, for example, where you've got internal intersections, stop signs, they have traffic lanes, that sort of thing, I'm not sure if they could do that there.
A follow-up on the mayor's question, when he asked, well, could these already be enforced? The answer I heard was, you'd have to call for a tow, so they couldn't be ticketed.
That's correct.
And so a tow would seem to be much more severe than a ticket, but if I had a person living in his car in my parking lot, or I had an RV parked in there, they're on vacation, and that's their RV spot, or they're traveling through town, that's their RV spot, or an abandoned car, or the semi truck, which we have had complaints on, I couldn't call to have them ticketed without changing the ordinance, correct? I'd just arrange myself to pay for towing, and then they, I would pay the towing, the towing company would charge again whatever impound fee or whatever to give the car back to the owner.
Yeah.
So that seems to me to be a bigger burden on the business owner than being able to have park enforcement come and ticket them for $25 you parked where you went to work.
Could I give an example that sort of elaborates on that a little bit? I didn't want to interrupt. Excellent. Using the example of somebody coming in to a parking lot and parking in an RV, for example, and let's say the owner doesn't want that to happen. Right now, what would happen is, if we have a no trespass either order or permission from the owner, then yeah, we could come in and warn the person without discussion through the business owner as to potential, you know, penalties and what will happen if you don't move. Sometimes we have still found that to be a problem, and we have actually had to, especially over the last couple of years, get a tow truck to come at the owner's behest, and not only is that way more expensive, just like you're speaking about, that it's the only remedy. The other problem they have in that particular case is, again, going to my earlier illusion, lots of times tow companies in that particular instance don't even want to come because of the circumstances of the owner of the RV, they're not going to come back and claim it, there are a lot of times a very limited demand for that particular RV, the kind of shape it might be, and that sort of thing. So we've actually had a problem where the tow companies are actually reluctant to even come and get it. We've actually taken a financial burden on ourselves in some of these cases where we kind of guarantee to the tow company that, hey, we will make sure that whatever your impound fees or whatever get covered, but we got to get this thing out of here. Obviously, in that situation, a parking ticket that was offered or assigned by the parking arm would be a lot cheaper proposition and easier, both for the owner of the RV and the business owner, and for the administrative function of it.
I know you have a comment, Manny. So I still have an issue with the ordinance, and as, you know, as I think this through, I have a, I park at a business, sometimes on a Saturday or Sunday, I will park in two spaces because it's in the shade and I'm the only car in, you know, 150 spaces or whatever's there, and I realize I could park a little bit over and have a hotter car, and maybe that's on me. But we also need, you know, when we have deliveries, now the proposed ordinance accounts for quick deliveries such as UPS or FedEx come in and out, but it doesn't account for, you know, perhaps unloading, or someone's moving in, or, you know, longer time deliveries. I think it's limited to 30 minutes. I'm also concerned with landscapers. Somebody comes in, pulls their trailer in, it's a lot longer than a parking space, and they're just out there working for their two hours, and then they're on their way. Wouldn't want them to get ticketed either, so I don't think that what we have is perfect, but, and I don't know what the answer is. My other concern is that there are a lot of changes in the ordinance to allow this to be done with civil enforcement and to be effective, and to take cars out of bike lanes and disabled cars and so forth, and we seem to be bogged down talking only about private business parking lots, and if someone has to call on a private business, is it the owner of the land, is it a tenant of the business? If it's a strip mall, there are multiple tenants, is one tenant calling on another? I don't, I don't think we want to create more confusion and more difficulty in understanding the law or being able to enforce it by creating every requirement. So I'm concerned about all of that, so again, I don't know what the answer is. I spoke last week that I'm more in favor of passing ordinance than not, because we have agreed to move to a civil enforcement. We certainly have parking problems. The police department assigned people to monitor parking, they couldn't get out of one neighborhood because they were so busy, and we have a citywide issue, 35 square miles and two officers to patrol that, not even every day. I don't think that we're really creating more problem by proceeding, but I do still have some concerns.
I have a question for staff, but what's the, what's the planned enforcement in business lots? In short, it's by request. Longer answer to that would be, currently, we have two parking enforcement officers. We do have some plans, longer term, to expand that, as we've mentioned, it counts before initially to four, but right now, the two officers that we have aren't even able to fulfill the mandate of what they were hired for in terms of being able to get out and do any sort of proactive parking enforcement. They're strictly responding to complaint at this point.
So by changing the ordinances to allow them to go onto private lots, we're actually making it so that business owners can have more tools at their disposal to take care of problems that they have, instead of causing problems for their business. That's the way I see it, that by changing this to allow our officers to go on private property, we're just giving our officers more tools to use to help things run better for businesses. Even though people will be concerned about them abusing their authority, I think there's two kinds of people. There's the people that believe that our staff is here to help things run better in our neighborhood, or they're there to terrorize people and make things worse, and if we change these ordinances to give our staff more tools to make things better for businesses and residents, we should do that and trust their judgment that they won't abuse their authority, and if they do, we have ways to remedy that. But the people who are sitting here, including their boss, we're in it for helping people, and I think we should give them the tools that they need so that they can make things better for businesses. Well, I would just say that, you know, there's a lot of good in this ordinance, especially no parking in bike lanes, a lot of the things that we're doing on our streets, which need to be done, they really need to be done. The part that the question seemed to come on is this, going into private parking lots or privately-owned parking lots that the public has access to, and that's the part that I'm not ready to support yet, and it needs some more work, or maybe, as Councilman Lang suggested, just take that. One thing I might, I would like to do, if, you know, if you feel you have to move forward, you know, the council will decide, but I would like to maybe contact the Chamber West, who deals with all kinds of different businesses, and see if they would send out an email to their members and get some feedback and see what kind of response we give, maybe just as another tool, but that may take, you know, a week or, well, maybe take a couple of weeks to do that, I don't know. I'm just, I'm just concerned that there's, there's a lot of problems, and Councilman Beeler articulated that better than I ever could, so.
I have two comments. In 35 years of owning a business and having a parking lot, one time did we have a car just get abandoned? So we called PD, they came and ticketed it, you have to give them 48 hours to come back and claim the car. They did not, so we called the towing company, and they took it. They didn't charge us a dime as a company, and they recouped their costs when the car was picked up by the owner. So as a business owner, we didn't incur any cost by having that vehicle towed, and we've only had that happen once in the 35 years we've been there that we needed help. I realize there's bigger parking lots that might have more problems, and that's why I would be fine with this ordinance if it was an opt-in and you pay a nominal fee. First off, it's not fair. I don't want to incur more burden on the other citizens because I have a bad parking lot, so I think whatever business needs that help should pay for that help. We have security, help businesses all the time, they pay the city for that service, that would kind of be what they're doing here, and then you know they want it in their parking lot and that they have problems. I don't see forcing it on someone and forcing, you know, if they have it in the ordinance that they can ticket my customer for being over the line, there's nothing to stop them, and before it gets back here and in a public hearing, you get that brought to us and then we have to change it, how many residents and non-residents do we anger by giving them a ticket that we didn't need to anger? Because in my parking lot, it's not a problem, in other, you know, they might have a problem and they need the service, so I wouldn't be opposed to having them opt in and pay for the service.
Thank you, Mayor. I personally think Loxie has a good point, but also Steeple, he has a good point too. Loxie mentioned about we give more, kind of another handcuff, but a bit more option out there, so the, towards out there, so the police officer can do their job, but also Steeple mentioned about create a problem. I can see that too. If a landlord has multiple tenants, and the tenant A and the tenant B, they don't lie to each other, and then they can tip on each other, they call police, come over, give them tickets, or they can call, they don't lie to the street mall owner, and they can give a hard time for that, to call people, police, and then give the tickets to, and then it could create a big problem for that one. I wouldn't mind about a private one tenant or a single tenant, and we don't have that problem, but multiple tenants, then you can have that problem. I see, you know, you have a good point, but Steeple also has a good point, I think that's, I'm big by him right now, yeah.
I just have a point of clarification, if we could on line 160, so, I mean, I get what he's saying here, but it does add that unless specifically authorized by the city, is that authorization, can that be initiated by the business owner or by the law owner? Or is that just something that the city would authorize?
Thanks for the question, sir, and rather than speculate that, I'm going to turn that question over to the legal staff for interpretation.
Eric Bunderson, City Attorney, just for a point of clarification, as you all know, the, that language is what exists in code right now, first and second. I don't think that could work the other way from how I read that, is, only if the city authorized the parking out of the designated parking stalls, could you be, and again, this is originally drafted as a city-owned parking lots, so the way I would interpret the original intent of that is, if we were to allow us, the city, somebody to park a big trailer or something like that over multiple parking stalls in our lot, right?
I guess I'm just asking, because should the words "owned by the city" be struck, you know, that line 160, I think, kind of goes along with what Councilman Lang was talking about. In my mind, that could be a possibility, that if that's, if that authorization could be initiated by the property owner, whether or not they wanted that, that's our question, whether or not that's still, that wording slips down.
If I understood the question right, and I'm not sure I did, so are you saying that, or asking that if the "owned by the city" phrase was taken out of line 158 there, but if private business owner was asking for enforcement, would they, would the city be able to come in and enforce? Is that the question?
Right, so that, because it says unless specifically authorized by the city, but I'm asking, if I had a business and we went ahead and struck "owned by the city," and this was my private parking lot, could I then call the city and ask for the city to authorize that exemption or that exception?
Oh, if we did leave the language in.
Correct.
Ah, okay.
But then the city would say, okay, well, you know, unless specifically authorized by the city, but can I ask the city to meet that exemption?
I think I heard Mr. Bunderson say no to that, is that correct?
Yeah, that's, that wasn't the original intent of it.
Yeah, I'm okay with that. May I add a couple of comments here, Mayor?
Mr. Pyle, in case you've forgotten, you are an ad hoc member of this council and have every right to be recognized and speak just as the other councillors, but you just can't vote.
My teachers in Southern Texas taught me, raised my hand when I asked permission when I was talking, so.
So yes.
So just to recap again, kind of what the staff's intent was here, even bringing this ordinance change forward, so we've instituted this civil parking enforcement program somewhere around the beginning of the year, and as we went through and have been doing enforcement, we've noticed some inconsistencies in our own ordinance. been doing enforcement, we've noticed some inconsistencies in our own ordinance sets to what we need to, to change, and in order to make the enforcement more fair, fair for the person getting the ticket and more clear for the officer that's issuing the ticket. So our intent here really is to get as much of that cleared up as we possibly can, I don't think we're coming to you with the ordinance with the belief that it's the perfect ordinance either, kind of like Councilman Bueller alluded to. So from a staff standpoint, our request, or at least our desire would be that if the council is so inclined to pass the ordinance tonight, we would like that, and even if you make some modification, like for example, if the parking lot thing is the big hangup, I, I think we would be able to work with any of the options that were brought up, either taking the language out or doing some sort of opt-in system, there was another suggestion last week to limit the size, maybe it's a larger parking lot versus a, versus a lower sized parking lot, personally, I kind of like the opt-in option better because it allows for any size. By having said all of that, the critical point here for the staff is that we're able to clean up some of the, the difficulties we're already facing, not necessarily that we would never address this again or need to address it again. If you do choose to take out that language, you are for sure going to have a couple of businesses out there that wanted us to come in and enforce it, we can't, or we would not be able to with that modified ordinance, but that doesn't mean that if those businesses, for example, were so adamant about that or had enough support that they couldn't come back in and ask us to change the ordinance again, so there's always ability to change in the future. Just to recap and summarize, we would like you to pass the ordinance as much of, including as much change as you are comfortable with so we can move on with some of those cases.
I'm going to make a motion for approval of ordinance 1920 with the following changes, that the proposed change designated as 22-2-102, I'm sorry, 101-5 not be included, that is the definition that defines parking lot to include public or private parking lots, that's an entirely new definition, and the other change would be that section 22-2-118, which is the public-private parking lot section, not be changed at all. In making this motion, it's my hope that we don't just say, okay, we've got a new parking ordinance, but that we come back and address and try to clean up some of this balance between what we can and should do on, on publicly accessed privately owned parking lots, that's my motion. Second.
I just need some more clarification there, so you're proposing that the approved ordinance change?
All of the ordinance.
Is everything except what parts?
22-2-118 would not be changed.
So we would, uh, owned by the city?
Okay, so lines 157, 158 not be changed?
Right, right, that section, and up above at line?
Forty-six, forty-seven.
Forty-six, forty-seven would not be added.
And then I would just say as a recommendation, maybe come back with language later that gives private, you know, property owners the ability to opt in if they want enforcement, if there's a, a demand from those people.
A new ordinance?
Right, a new ordinance change, actual people say they want it.
Yeah, before we get to that point, let's have the discussion in detail so we can give clear direction to staff, okay, and by the way, I support the motion, I'm very comfortable with that. Any further comments?
I, I would still like to see the, the privately owned public accessible parking lots added in, there already is a call for that, so I would really like to see maybe just one phrase added to line 160, you know, if, if business owners opt in, something to that effect, is, is there support for that, or?
I'm comfortable with staff bringing something back, but not approving that tonight.
Yeah, I think if staff brings something like that back, then we can look at it separately.
But you could make a substitute motion.
I'm just trying to, to get, to see if, if, if there's enough failure for that, that it'd be worth it.
I see exactly what you're saying, but I personally, I would like the word smitten a little more outside of the particular.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm pleased that the other parts are being passed, certainly, if, if we all do.
Okay, any further comments? Seeing no further comments to our city recorder for the roll call.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fiduc Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, next we go to, let's see, ordinance 19-22 amending our code by adding rates for fleet maintenance services for outside agencies, this created the situation where we perform work for outside agencies because we have such great people working on our vehicles and other things like that in the fleet management area, and so they wanted to set specific rates that we would be reimbursed at, and the previous rates were kind of a little bit low, so this seemed like an appropriate way to go, if we're going to be performing services for outside groups, meaning non-West Valley City groups, that there should be fees collected, and, let's see, we charged rates previously, but they weren't in line with what we were actually doing, is that correct, Judge Conover?
Yeah, this is a relationship that we've had for a long time, and they just changed, thanks.
Okay, so that's the issue before us, to the council.
I would refer to the approval of ordinance 1922.
Second. Any further comments? Seeing none to our city recorder.
Councilman Fiduc Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, next we go to resolution 19-96 to authorize the reimbursement of funds to West Valley City, or WVC Industrial for earthwork and grading on 2450 South, a lot is happening there, this seems to be the best way to deal with getting filled dirt back in there, there's work that's being held up because it needed to be done, what was it, cut and fill, removal of existing trees, capping existing water wells in the road right away, anyway, this is $280,164, that is the issue before us if we approve this reimbursement.
Point of clarification, Mr. Pyle, would you please confirm that WVC Industrial LLC is not a division of West Valley City Government?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Without move for approval of resolution 19-96.
Second. Properly before us, any further comments? Seeing none to our city recorder.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilwoman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Fiduc Manu?
Aye.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, next we go to our consent agenda, resolution 19-97, this one, I'm actually going to make a couple of more comments because there's a little more involved, this is also $19,000, it says state funds, I assume this is from the Class C road.
No, well, actually, that's a good question, I was going to say it was, not grant, but state funding that we secured outside of the Class C road.
Was it, oh, it could be Class C.
It just says state.
Russ Woolworth and Public Works, so the funding for the project is coming from a number of different sources, so you're right on all of the above, so we're getting some money through, from the state through Sully County, and then we're supplementing with Class C road funds.
And there's a lot going on here with, just when you look at the detail, you know, this is related, that 2700 West project, and, you know, the, the walls that are going on, the homes that have the back facing the street, the patterned concrete that's going in, I mean, there's all sorts of things happening there, and so this is the amount that there was an appraisal that ended up being, it even said it went through the Utah Property Rights Ombudsman under mediation, so, anyway, this is what it is, that's the introduction to the council.
For approval of resolution 19-97.
Second. Properly before us, seeing no further comments to our city recorder.
Councilman Fiduc Manu?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lang?
Yes.
Councilman Bueller?
Aye.
Councilman Hune?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
Yes.
Councilman Norfelt?
Yes.
And Mayor Bigelow?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, and thanks to the council, I know I get long-winded sometimes, but you'll each have your opportunity in the future, so, with that, I think maybe a motion to adjourn, and then we'll go see what the preliminary results are.
Move to adjourn.
All in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
Those folks say no. The motion passed unanimously, we are adjourned.
Okay.